It's five o'clock and I'll call this special meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order, please, and Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertoni?
Here.
Councilmember Moyn?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tim?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vacaro?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here. We're all here, so that's wonderful. Processed for public comments, Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects on the agenda may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting. To speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card and give it to me. When joining via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone to request to speak. Speakers are limited to two to three minutes. And, let's see, we have lots of cards here, and first, we have George Vasquez.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and our District One Councilman Chuck, Tim, and Councilman. This is the first time I've been here, so we moved here, my wife and I moved here three years ago. We were burned out in the fires of Malibu, the Wusley Fires. So, our kids live up here in this area, and my grandchildren. So, we live in this little area called the Araya Development, built in 2004, just below East Ridge Development. Very nice area, we like it. The only thing we don't have is a little park for our kids and our grandchildren. And I was reading the article that Joe Green-Heron wrote, and I thought, well, I'll come down. There's a very high concentration of about 5,000 new residents that should be coming in to Fairfield, and our district will be one of the areas that will accumulate most of those young people in the new apartments that are being built there at Business Center and Sassoon Valley. And I think what we need is a little retail shopping center near the Sassoon Valley-Salana College area, something like Nuggets, Whole Foods in Napa, perhaps a Sprout, you know, something for a little bit organic, new type of markets that are being built currently. We lack that. The only thing we have is Safeway, and it's an old one. And you know about the parking and the vandalism that occurs there in the parking lot. And across the street, at Chase, an armed robbery. I think that's something that we should consider when we're finding out what we're going to do, long-term planning for this, for our needs in this area. Also, maybe you should address the parking at the main entrance of Rockville Regional Park. That's it. Dynamics have changed, often move slowly, but it can be done correctly.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, we have Nora Dyson.
Mayor Price, city council members, good evening. Thank you very much for having these three special meetings on the general plan update. We really appreciate that you're taking the time to do this. I am really hopeful that as you think about your decisions, that you're thinking of Fairfield as a vibrant community, balanced development, attracting businesses that will bring good-paying local jobs. We get the impression that the intent is more for just housing. Please don't keep us just a bedroom community. We can be so much more. I'm stunned that Fairfield lags behind Sacramento. Sacramento used to be a lower-based city, and it has leapfrogged Salana County, Fairfield. There really is a lot of opportunity. I sense that our city staff is different now. We've got David, who was able to get the new BMW to locate here. So, I hope that is the type of attitude that will be used to make good, long-term decisions for our community, to make this a place where, not just where you come and then commute somewhere else to work, but somewhere here where you can attract businesses, like I said, that will offer good local jobs. And having people, residents happy here also means that you provide services. And you'll hear a lot of people talk about the need for a grocery store. They really, there really is a need, at least for one more grocery store, because the lack of competition has made it so that the service at our one Safeway is very lax. Competition will really change it. So, like I said, please think of us as a beautiful part of your city that can even be better, and not just a place that will be crammed with high-density housing. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, Chuck Royston?
Good evening to you all, and to my neighbors. Pardon me, I'm a little nervous. My wife and I and family lived here in 1996, so we have seen quite a few changes over the years. And I remember when we first moved in, there was that little store over there that we all stopped at from time to time. It was called Chuck's Cheaper. Oh, I can't, I haven't used it for a while, so I know it's called something. But anyway, the area around that area was supposedly going to be commercial and was going to be a shopping center of some kind. That's what all our neighbors talked about, and we all said that. He said, "Oh, yeah, great, someday we're going to have that. Don't have to drive that five, 10 miles, whatever it was, to go to a store." And of course, through the years, and the vote came up, that didn't happen. I'm not blaming, here to blame anybody on it, it's history. But I am asking is that, I have seen all of the developments come in here, and God bless them, nothing against that either, everybody needs a place to live. But there comes a line of where, you know, hey, enough is enough, and I'm not the first one to say this to you, I'm sure, but it's all the stuff that goes with it. I mean, it's wonderful to have the great neighborhoods, the great neighbors, God bless, you're lucky to get a home and get a great neighbor next to you, which I, fortunately, I did. But it's all of the cost to the rest of us, the commute time increases for all of us that have to go someplace and work. All of the, we see everything going up, PG&E, water, garbage, you name it, you know, everybody knows it's all going up, and it's not going to be your mortgage that's going to kill you, it's going to be all those bills you have to pay, it's going to pull you out of your house, because you're not going to be able to pay them. Anyway, I said my piece. God bless.
Thank you very much.
Joe Green-Hefron?
My name is Joe Green-Hefron, and I've spoke to you before. I am vice president of the Turnstone Homeowners Association that's located just north of West America Bank. In recent weeks, I have met with leaders from seven other homeowners associations that represent 30,000 to 35,000 residents that are served by the North Cordelia Junction area, people within the city limits, but also in Green Valley and Rockville Corners area. Just two days ago, I met with, six of us met with Chuck Tim to discuss some of our concerns and make specific suggestions for improving the community. I'm going to highlight a few. First, key retail and commercial and municipal services are lacking or not accessible due to transportation barriers, traffic congestion, and haphazard development. For example, there's only one elementary school and one small public park north of I-80, and only one grocery store in all of the entire Cordelia area. This is clearly inadequate. These and other needed services, a fire station north of I-80, and local police presence need to be prioritized first for remaining underdeveloped or underutilized parcels. Second, the proposed alternatives do not reflect the facts on the ground, such as recently added housing and apartments, hotels, and warehouses currently under construction. Existing land uses don't reflect the reality of what's on the ground. Further, this ongoing development and the proposed alternatives are haphazard, bearing little relation to use compatibility. Do very large warehouses really belong next to apartments and senior care facilities? Doesn't make sense to me. The factual errors on existing land uses need to be corrected, and more consideration needs to be given to the appropriateness of adjacent land use. The plan should clearly designate the areas for these retail and service businesses that are needed to support the retail, industrial, and residential developments. Third, housing and schools should be precluded from areas between Business Center Drive and I-80 due to increased health concerns from noise and air pollution along the freeway. These areas should be reserved for commercial and industrial uses. Fourth, the Sassoon-Pitman Road interchange improvements should be prioritized. We realize the funding needs to come from, help from others, the federal, the state, we need to apply for it. This will fix the poor on-off access from westbound I-80, thereby relieving congestion at Green Valley Road, and supporting the retail that has not gone in along Sassoon Valley Road. Just as important, it will provide currently nonexistent pedestrian and bike access across I-80, which will help reduce dependence on driving and better connect the neighborhoods north and south of I-80. Last, take your time, talk to people, get input from the community, including folks south of I-80, hopefully there are some here today. They no doubt have other ideas besides what the people north of I-80 talked about with Chuck. The general update is-
Your time has ended.
-needed and must show a path for better-connected and less auto-dependent community for the coming decades. Thanks.
Thank you.
Susan Hoffman?
Mayor and Councilman, I just want to say, I've been here for about 25 to almost 30 years now, and it has grown and grown in the Green Valley-Cordelia area, but not for the best. It's just high-density housing that I'm seeing going in, or you want, building the apartments and wanting to build more apartments behind hotels, which really will cram up Business Center. And I just think that you need to take your time with this general plan. We need more services, a police substation, we need another fire station out there north in the Green Valley area, Sassoon area, and we need a grocery store, maybe a restaurant, something, services for our community, so we don't have to go to Napa or Vacaville to shop, to have something to eat and stuff. And I know all of you, I know one of you lives in the area, and you should, if you agreed to more housing, be ashamed of yourself, because it's ridiculous. We, like I said, we need, the schools are overcrowded, you build more, hold off until all these apartments and what is being built and approved already has been done, and then decide on how you're going to proceed cautiously and stuff with our community. It just seems like every time we are here, you do a deaf ear to our community and do not listen to us. So, I hope you really listen to the community and what they want, and please do not rush into high-density housing or anything else. We need other services out there besides housing.
Thank you.
Douglas Craw?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Douglas Craw. I represent the Labor's Council, Labor's Pension Fund, and they've been players in Fairfield for a long time, employed a lot of people, own a building there, and some of you are familiar with. That building is on 220 Campus Lane. It's the last three-acre, as I affectionately call it, the last three-acre piece there, nice and flat, and they've been waiting for the right time to do something appropriate and something that made sense and viable, and the time has not come. They've been there since the 80s and have been waiting patiently, and it's been tough. The, the Labor's also own the building next door. If you look, as you're doing, going up Sassoon, look across the vacant parcel, there's a building behind there, I think it's about 24,000 square feet. It's vacant, and it's for sale, maybe even for lease at the right price. I come before you respectfully to request the city of Fairfield consider changing the land use designation of the vacant three-acre parcel to high-density residential, which flies in the face of some of the comments here, specifically rental apartments. The site is currently designated as industrial in the city's general plan. We request the change, we request the land use change rests in the following areas. The marketplace demand for industrial users is very, very soft, has been for a while, and it continues to decline. Currently, over 800,000 square feet of commercial and industrial space available in Fairfield. That number translates into a vacancy rate of almost 50%. I don't know, I don't have a number for you of how much new construction there is, but I'd venture to say zero. In 2021, the absorption continued downward, losing another 600,000 square feet, so there's a lot of vacancy out there, and at the absorption rate, we'll be here for a very, very long time. Lack of demand for new space, coupled with increasing vacancy rates for existing space, continues to drive rental rates down further, reducing the economic viability of any new industrial space. To construct, to construct three acres of industrial buildings adjacent to existing homes may prove to be problematic. I mean, that's just an accident waiting to happen, I think. The expectation is that residents in the proximity to the subject parcel would prefer a similar use, while an industrial user may be confronted with numerous-
Your time has expired, please conclude.
I'll respect your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glenn Gartley?
Good evening. Been to several of these meetings, and we always talk about, you know, more housing and traffic and resources. Really, what I want to ask you is, I've been a resident here since 75, other than a few 20 years I did in the military. What have you done to improve things here? And you can't just say we've increased housing, because that brings in more people. So, what have you done? Homelessness got worse, traffic's got worse, our roads are worse. So, the one question, what have you and your predecessors done to make things, the people who elected you to these offices, what have you done to make their lives better, other than just worse? Think about that.
All right, Jim, I don't know how to say you're listening. DeLube, is that right?
I've had an unpronounceable Dutch name my entire life. Thank you, I'm Jim DeClo, and I've been a resident here for 32 years. I know for some of you, that still makes me a newbie, but I've loved living in the community, and as you know, this is a really, really important decision, having the general plan. Now, since I'm a teacher, let's review what we talked about last time, the last time we were together. We were presented with-
besides what the people north of I-80 talked about with Chuck. The general update is-
Your time has ended.
-needed and must show a path for better-connected and less auto-dependent community for the coming decades. Thanks.
Susan Hoffman?
Mayor and Councilman, I just want to say, I've been here for about 25 to almost 30 years now, and it has grown and grown in the Green Valley-Cordelia area, but not for the best. It's just high-density housing that I'm seeing going in, or you want building the apartments and wanting to build more apartments behind hotels, which really will cram up Business Center. And I just think that you need to take your time with this general plan. We need more services, a police substation. We need another fire station out there north in the Green Valley area, Sassoon area. And we need a grocery store, maybe a restaurant, something services for our community, so we don't have to go to Napa or Vacaville to shop, to have something to eat and stuff. And I know all of you, I know one of you lives in the area, and you should, if you agreed to more housing, be ashamed of yourself because it's ridiculous. We, like I said, we need, the schools are overcrowded, you build more, hold off until all these apartments and what is being built and approved already has been done, and then decide on how you're going to proceed cautiously and stuff with our community. It just seems like every time we are here, you do a deaf ear to our community and do not listen to us. So I hope you really listen to the community and what they want, and please do not rush into high-density housing or anything else. We need other services out there besides housing.
Thank you.[292.44][292.44](APPLAUSE)
Douglas Craw?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Douglas Craw. I represent the Labor's Council, Labor's Pension Fund, and they've been players in Fairfield for a long time, employed a lot of people, own a building there, and some of you are familiar with. That building is on 220 Campus Lane. It's the last three-acre, as I affectionately call it, the last three-acre piece there, nice and flat. And they've been waiting for the right time to do something appropriate and something that made sense and viable, and the time has not come. They've been there since the 80s and been waiting patiently, and it's been tough. The Labor's also own the building next door. If you look, as you're doing going up Sassoon, look across the vacant parcel, there's a building behind there. I think it's about 24,000 square feet. It's vacant, and it's for sale, maybe even for lease at the right price. I come before you respectfully to request the City of Fairfield consider changing the land use designation of the vacant three-acre parcel to high-density residential, which flies in the face of some of the comments here, specifically rental apartments. The site is currently designated as industrial in the city's general plan. We request the change, we request the land use change rests in the following areas. The marketplace demand for industrial users is very, very soft, has been for a while, and it continues to decline. Currently, over 800,000 square feet of commercial and industrial space available in Fairfield. That number translates into a vacancy rate of almost 50%. I don't know, I don't have a number for you of how much new construction there is, but I'd venture to say zero. In 2021, the absorption continued downward, losing another 600,000 square feet, so there's a lot of vacancy out there, and at the absorption rate, we'll be here for a very, very long time. Lack of demand for new space, coupled with increasing vacancy rates for existing space, continues to drive rental rates down, further reducing the economic viability of any new industrial space. To construct three acres of industrial buildings adjacent to existing homes may prove to be problematic. I mean, that's just an accident waiting to happen, I think. The expectation is that residents in the proximity to the subject parcel would prefer a similar use, while an industrial user may be confronted with numerous-
Your time has expired. Please conclude.
I'll respect your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glenn Gartley?
Good evening. Been to several of these meetings, and we always talk about, you know, more housing and traffic and resources. Really, what I want to ask you is, I've been a resident here since '75, other than a few 20 years I did in the military. What have you done to improve things here? And you can't just say we've increased housing, because that brings in more people. So what have you done? Homelessness got worse, traffic's got worse, our roads are worse. So the one question, what have you and your predecessors done to make things, the people who elected you to these offices, what have you done to make their lives better, other than just worse? Think about that.
All right. Jim, I don't know how to say you're listening. DeLube, is that right?
I've had an unpronounceable Dutch name my entire life. Thank you. I'm Jim DeClo, and I've been a resident here for 32 years. I know for some of you, that still makes me a newbie, but I've loved living in the community. And as you know, this is a really, really important decision, having the general plan. Now, since I'm a teacher, let's review what we talked about last time. The last time we were together, we were presented with multiple scenarios that you rejected. And part of that rejection was, there really wasn't much opportunity for public input. I remember in the early 90s, Charlie Long, Vision 2020, to do that general plan, we had hundreds of meetings. I think I went, I don't know, 35 of them in order to do that. We're having a couple of meetings here. Now let me focus on my community of Cordelia, my section of town. I like the comment that it's haphazard, because it does look haphazard. I went by Cordelia Corporate Commons today. It's houses. That is, we did the general plan, we said, this is industrial, this is commercial, this is residential, yet because of the gentleman's comments before, if industrial is slow, then they come to the city council, and you have industrial and housing and all of it mixed up. That is, we have not followed the general plan by rezoning. Now, in the proposal tonight, there are many, many proposals to change industrial land into residential again. That's a mistake. That is, they bought that as industrial, expecting it to be industrial, and if you change that, then you'll mess up the jobs-housing balance, which we are turning into solely a bedroom community. And let's not talk about the hypocritical idea of connectors. Sprawling into Green Valley does not make a connector. Making the barbell into a slightly fatter barbell does not make a connector. Let's drop that rhetoric. It is not a connector. And let me just ask the question rhetorically, who does the general plan serve? Who does it serve? Does it serve the citizens? The proposal that you see tonight, I read, it's a special interest proposal. It was made in a smoke-filled room, although no one's smoking anymore, but it was really designed to make developers money. And that's not our job as citizens. Our job is, we like you to make money when you comply with our vision-
Please conclude.
-and not, we are not in it to make money, we're in it for our citizens. Thank you
Quentin Voice?
Good afternoon. My name is Quentin Voice. I do serve on Solano Community College's governing board, although I'm not here on behalf of the college. I am interested in the plan's view of the college as an asset, which is amazing. However, there's been no collaboration with our board or our staff on what that looks like. And so there's been lots of parts of this plan that incorporates a vision for the college without asking the college. So we have our own student housing plans and our own plans on campus, and so we do, you know, we'd love to be, we'd love to be a resource to the consultants if they would like to talk about the college and incorporate us in their plan. I am in support of more housing. I do think that, you know, this area is auto zone, you know, is all auto, because it's not been a mixed neighborhood, it's been a bedroom community. And so I do think that housing is, needs to be a component of the Cordelia plans. When I look at the overall view, there's, you know, almost no resistance to larger density on, you know, North Texas and other places, and then tons of resistance here that are essentially akin to modern redlining, when you look at one part of your area, of your city, with no problem of putting high density, and then other areas are reserved for no low-income people. I, I'm an avid hiker. I can't tell you how excited I was to see that there was consideration of Nelson Hill being a park. Please do not consider that being a private residence on Nelson Hill. We, if you've ever been to Rockville Park on a sunny day, it is jam-packed with people parked all the way down the road. There, people are looking for more outdoors experiences in Fairfield. So I hope that I can be there. And then my last piece I just wanted to consider is, be careful when you're rolling this out about infrastructure comes first. Sassoon Valley overpass is a disaster. I see my students walk over it with no sidewalk every day. And so, you know, they go to the college, and they live on the other side, and they'll walk over this overpass that has no bike or pedestrian pieces. So before any more development of people adds to either side of that, that really needs to be prioritized as some infrastructure to get, allow people to safely cross the freeway. But thank you very much for your consideration. I have a hard choice.[918.51][918.51](APPLAUSE)
Okay, we will turn to the Zoom speakers now. Brian?
Thank you. Yes, we have, right now, we have Brenda Villanueva. And Brenda, feel free to unmute, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Hello, my name is Brenda Villanueva. I am the resident of the Green Valley Lake area. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I would like to encourage the council, as well as the contractors working with the master plan, to plan for our immediate area past the next few years. We want to look for the next 10 to 15 years that's going to continue making the Green Valley-Sassoon Valley area beautiful. I'm talking about the areas of Green Valley Road, Business Center Drive, Mangels Boulevard, and Sassoon Valley Road. We are not just large neighborhoods, we are vibrant communities looking to enjoy our media area. Please take into consideration what the neighbors need to continue to be a vibrant community outside of Fairfield Central. We need an expansion of our parks in our media area. Joe mentioned earlier, the only public park on the Green Valley side is at Vintage Valley, but there are houses and apartments all the way down towards Abernathy, and we need to take in consideration those young children that need to have an area to play. We do not have a community center or a central meeting space for neighbors to congregate, to have events or family time. We need an expansion of services, markets, not necessarily large grocery stores, but markets, new restaurants that aren't fast food. A neighbor of ours mentioned that the coffee shop at Journey Coffee was such a beautiful little coffee shop, yet we don't have one in our immediate area, except for Starbucks on both sides of the freeway. It'd be, it'd be nice to have a meeting spot at a coffee shop that's not Starbucks, that could be a local, a local business, and any additional meeting areas for our families to congregate. The past few years, the rezoning of certain areas, like the new apartments on West American Business Center Drive, the large DCs that are being currently constructed, and you know what, the planning department needs to admit, they did a poor job with their Lego stacking of that particular area. Please, really consider us long-term. We don't want to have mixed-use housing. We want you to plan for the future that will allow us to continue to grow and have a central place to enjoy ourselves. You know, somebody also mentioned earlier that we don't have, we're currently getting a fire station, but we don't have police presence on a, on a regular basis. And we would love to see that. We would love to be able to have more of a community that we can trust our neighbors and not worry that something bad is going to happen. Please look towards the future, 10 to 15 years. We want Green Valley to continue being vibrant, welcoming, open space for our children and grandchildren, so they can continue to enjoy. Thank you so much, and have a lovely evening.
Thank you.
Yes, our next speaker is Ram, and Ram, you have three minutes. Feel free to unmute.
Hi, my name is Ram Madadi, and I live in Cordelia area, New Cordelia, at the Cordelia, I mean, Gold Hill Road, up the Gold Hill Road in South Brook. Yeah, I've been here for 17 years, but we have to travel all the way to the Business Center Drive for anything small to shop, right? And we were expecting a small strip mall, strip mall, some shops behind the Shavran, used to be Tower Mart before. So don't have the idea why it was changed to residential. They're building more housing there. That's a bit of a concern, because we don't have any more land for shopping, any kind of like coffee shop, stuff like the earlier you talked about, which would increase the quality of our life and not drive like five miles to the Business Center Drive to get stuff. So the second thing I would like to raise is, like, we don't, it would be nice to have a park and ride at the Gold Hill Road for people who commute towards the South Bay, towards San Roman or that area. And if the bus, bus which goes to Walnut Creek or Pleasant Hills stops, Solana Express, I guess it's called, if it stops here, that would be, that would reduce commuters going in cars. That will help the environment as well, right? So I appreciate, I did report, toured a couple of times a few years back, also before as a comment, but I didn't get any response on that. That's it from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and our next speaker is Drew. And Drew, feel free to unmute. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Drew. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to address a concern. As a lifetime resident of this area, I was raised on Wallada Drive, was born in 1973. Prior to the late 60s and the early 70s, there was a cancer cluster on Wallada Drive that a lot of people that have been here this long probably remember. A lot of children died because of this, this cancer cluster from the, from the groundwater. I have a concern about the truck stop, because I used to ride bikes over there, and I was warned by the employees not to get too close to the holes that they were digging up with the back hose to pour in whatever, whatever was in the 50-gallon drums that they were pouring into the ground and then covering up. So I was a kid back then, I, I imagined that, that they were dumping chemicals. And I spoke to a friend of mine, Lamont Thompson, who wrote on Nextdoor about this. I don't know if he's on now, but he said to me, Drew, when I was one of Fairfield Planning Commissioners, one of Fairfield's Planning Commissioners, I asked staff about the level of site cleanup, because I remember the truck stop was on the site. I was told by staff, the county environmental health department said the site was clean. However, planning staff didn't provide documentation in their staff report and blew me off. Depending on the future use of the site, there are multiple levels of quote-unquote, quote-unquote "clean." The site may be clean enough to leave, to leave follow, but not clean enough for commercial purposes or even residential use. In my role as planning commissioner, in a public meeting, I asked them to provide proof to the planning commission that the site was clean enough for residential use. The planning commission never received an answer. Under the California Environmental Quality Act, staff, planning commission, and city council are responsible for ensuring the site is clean enough for whatever use is proposed prior to project approval. The question that I have, based on these comments and on my own personal, my own personal witnessing of, of things that went on, on this site-
And your time is up. If you could conclude.
I'm wondering if the, if the, if any of this documentation requested by Lamont Thompson has been provided or will be provided prior to project approval.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is JoJo, and you have three minutes. Feel free to unmute.
Thank you. My name's Joe Joyce, and I'm a candidate for District Presupervisor for the Board of Supervision. And I was asked to attend this meeting by Drew, because of his concerns, and it was a last-minute notification. I didn't know if he was going to be able to speak this evening, so I did attend, based on the concerns that he had. He sounded, and he was very articulate, and again, so I was here just to express his concerns for him if he wasn't able to. But, so to reveal his concerns, he just wants to make sure that that site is, gets its documentation and, and make sure that the site is clean before the projects are going over there. And again, I assured him that I would attend the meeting and make sure that we, we provide some kind of oversight with and follow-up, and make sure the other citizens that are there today are aware of the problem or is concerned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, and before I call our next speaker, if there's anyone else on Zoom who would like to speak on this item, feel free to use the Raise Your Hand feature. And we do have a telephone caller, and that would be star nine on your phone to raise your hand. Okay, and our next speaker is Lucci, and you have three minutes. Feel free to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Lucy, and I'm a 20-year Green Valley resident, and I'm concerned about high-density housing. I don't want any more housing in this area. I don't even think we're going to be able to recover from what's already being built. There are so many high-end apartment homes coming in here, and we don't have the infrastructure to support them. We don't have the schools, we don't have the parks, we don't have the shopping, we don't have even the transportation options for people to manage. We still need to be able to get from here to San Francisco without having to go through the Business Center Drive area. No one has talked about a proposal for a freeway on ramp to get to the west side of the, of the coastline. We need a lot of things, but we sure don't need any more apartments. So I really would ask you to suspend any action leading to high-density housing in the area. We will help you come up with some plans for other options. I'm working with Habitat for Humanity to try to come up with some affordable housing options for low-income people in the area, because we certainly have not met our obligation there. But we just don't want to see any more apartments approved. If you don't mind, please consider tabling any options that include high-density housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I see no further hands raised. I'll just give, actually, we do have one hand just raised. We have Kristin Thomas, and stand by. Feel free to unmute, Kristin. You have three minutes.
Good evening. First, I do want to say thank you very much for taking the time. I guess my concern would be, and I have been coming to these meetings, speaking at these meetings for three years plus, my concern is that you guys don't seem to be listening. You're not listening to what your constituents want, you're not listening to what is going to make sense for the community. I would ask, before you continue on with just developing and developing, and I don't know, to be honest, if there's money involved, I don't know what the motive is to keep developing without thinking things through, but I would just ask that you consider what people actually want, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, and we, let's see, we have no further hands raised, and anyone else wishing to speak, feel free to use the Raise Your Hand feature. And that's it for the moment. No further, no further inquiries.
If you would like to speak, sir, fill out a card, come on up. Fill out the card later. Okay, okay, come on up. Rilla Vista. And they, this is off the record, what you guys are talking about. They have a can recycling at the biggest supermarket, which is Lear's in Rilla Vista, and it's really convenient. Everybody recycles. That's what they do. convenient. Everybody recycles. That's what they do. They get up, they're up at four, five in the morning, and they recycle cans, bottles, anything. Here, they have one. And it's clear over by Claybank, our, uh, Peabody and on the border. And Vacaville has three to four of them. We have one. Why is that? You all have answers for that? I know why. You don't like the homeless. That's all I have to say. Sorry. Thank you. Any other folks who wanna speak on this item? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments, and we'll certainly take those comments very seriously, I think. So we, now we come to new business. Madam Clerk, if you would please.
All right, Fairfield Forward, 2050 General Plan Update Project, and I'll introduce our planning manager, Dave Feinstein.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor Price, members of the city council. I am Dave Feinstein. I'm the city's planning division manager. So you've been hearing from a number of speakers at the first part of our meeting, all talking to you about our general plan update with a focus on, uh, comments on our Cordelia area. And that's actually what we're here to speak about tonight. So tonight is the second of three detailed workshops that we'll be holding with the city council regarding alternatives for our general plan update. And as you're all aware, for the last year, a little over a year, we've been working, uh, very diligently, uh, on an update to the city's general plan. And the last time the city's general plan was started fresh was, uh, about thirty years ago. And so we are at the point where we are re-looking at essentially the next thirty years for the city and how we will grow and develop. Last, uh, November, uh, our, our project consultants, Diat and Batia, presented the council with a series of alternatives for how the city could grow and develop for the next thirty years. Uh, we heard from a number of speakers, uh, at that meeting, primarily focused on, uh, the impacts of the general plan on the Sassoon Valley area. And at that point, the city council said, why don't we slow down, uh, rather than take all this in one meeting, let's have a series of workshops. And so, uh, we all agreed that we would have three, uh, detailed workshops. Last month, we had a workshop focused on the central part of the city. Uh, we talked about the heart of Fairfield, the Solano Mall area, North Texas Street, and we got very good direction from the city council. Tonight's workshop will focus, uh, on the Cordelia area specifically. And again, we've heard from a number of speakers at the very beginning of the meeting on that topic. So we'll talk about the Cordelia area. We'll also talk about some select areas at the periphery of the city. And what we're looking for is for direction from the city council, uh, regarding, uh, what the final alternative for our general plan should look like for those areas. So as we did, uh, at our last workshop and, and as well last November, we're gonna have Allison Moore from Diat and Batia come up and lead that presentation for you. Uh, we also have Rajiv Batia, uh, on, uh, on Zoom, so, uh, he's a voice in the sky. He's a principal with Diat and Batia, uh, if there's any, uh, areas that he can fill in. Before I turn the meeting over to Allison, though, I do wanna introduce, uh, a new staff person who's working on the general plan with us. Uh, we have Jesse Hernandez. As you're aware, uh, Amy Krymeier, who was our project manager, uh, left to take another job, and we've, we've now hired Jesse, uh, to come work with the planning department, uh, with the planning division, I should say. Uh, Jesse's an associate planner, and we're very happy to have her on board to help with that project. So with that, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Allison.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Great to see you in person. So as Dave mentioned, um, tonight, we're hoping to continue our conversation about the vision and receive direction for several areas and topics that bear relation to Fairfield's general plan update, the plan for the next thirty years. These areas include the Cordelia Junction, um, neighborhoods on the periphery, and then ways to improve connections within the city. Since our last meeting on the eighth, we wanted to give you an update about outreach that we've conducted since then. We've held individual property owner interviews as well as group forums, so that neighbors in certain portions of Sassoon Valley could speak to each other, as well as with some interest groups. At the final meeting on April twelfth, we'll report back on our outreach conducted with these stakeholders and property owners and ask for guidance in this particular area. We'll also summarize what we heard at the prior meetings, combining concepts you liked or wanted to see, and come up with our preferred alternative, which will form the basis of the full plan update and the foundation for our policy direction. So just to recap from last time, the alternatives, um, help us explore various concepts for how Fairfield might achieve growth or preserve areas that the community values and achieve the community's vision through different land use patterns. Alternatives represent big-picture concepts and ideas that attempt to help us answer the following questions. I wanna stress that they are general, big-picture concepts, more of a ten-thousand-foot look at what will happen in these general areas, and parcel-level land use maps, more robust analysis of infrastructure and services, and specific goals and policies will be developed once we have this direction. The opportunity areas are, are these general areas in red identifying, that were identified using analysis of vacant and underutilized land patterns, as well as accounting for projects that have already been spoken for or that are in the pipeline. At the last study session, you gave us clear direction on areas in central Fairfield, including support for additional mixed uses and housing opportunities that bolster the vision for the heart of Fairfield specific plan in downtown and around key transportation hubs like the Transportation Center and the Fairfield-Sassoon Train Station. North Texas Street and the Solano Town Center Mall were also identified as areas for bold major transformation with additional housing, community and employment uses, and more. So tonight, we want to continue the conversation focusing on Cordelia and areas on the periphery and, uh, on improving connections in the city. So the first area, Cordelia, particularly the Cordelia Junction area shown in red here is up first. So as you know, the Cordelia area is largely separated from central Fairfield and also segmented by I-80 into the north and the south. Single-family residential uses surround areas of office and currently vacant land along Business Center Drive to the north. The commercial center, um, to the left in the red here includes Costco, various shops, and Safeway, the only grocery store, um, in the north area. Many of the vacant parcels are currently zoned as commercial, highway, residential, or industrial business park. Light industrial and service commercial uses lie in this triangle area here between six eighty and eighty. And then south of I-80 is some regional commercial in the red and light industrial in the purple. Neighborhood commercial, that light salmon color, and, um, vacant land in the gray. And, um, just to the east of Pittman Road are, are some residential uses. So using, um, census data, we, we calculated the Cordelia area's general population of about twenty-six thousand eight hundred, which includes, because of the way the block groups are in the census, all of the unincorporated Upper Green Valley area and the area on the east side of Sassoon Valley Road, south of Rockville Road, and east of Sassoon Valley Creek. To the south, it includes the unincorporated blocks of Old Cordelia and the largely unpopulated areas south of the city along six eighty. So as people have mentioned, Cordelia is an area that has seen a lot of recent development. Many of the vacant parcels I mentioned are now pipeline projects, and several major housing projects, um, are slated to come online in the city as well as in the county. So this land use pattern and recent development underlies some of the main issues in the area. We've heard throughout the community engagement process and through comments here this evening that people desire more commercial community amenities, like grocery stores or restaurants, parks, um, a need for emergency services planning. They're concerned about traffic and additional strain on existing services. We've also heard from landowners of vacant parcels that their current designated use, largely regional commercial, office, or industrial, is not feasible, and generally that residential uses represent the highest and best use of their property. The alternatives concepts presented at the November second council meeting paint the area with a broad brush, and we have the opportunity tonight to refine them or overhaul them, uh, with your input. Whatever direction is given tonight, we'll continue to study and refine the area even further. So the, the three alternatives that were presented. Um, so in line with community vision for equitable jobs, growth, and opportunity, alternative one emphasizes the importance of Solano College as a knowledge hub with higher-density student housing and compatible retail clustered to the campus's southwest corner. Along Business Center Drive, an expanded medical, research, and advanced manufacturing sector provides new jobs and a natural fit for hands-on technical education programs in partnership with the college. Alternative two envisions this area as a jobs corridor with expanded industrial uses, uh, research and development, and other flexible office uses intended to support the changing needs of workers and employers. Alternative three envisions the area as a mixed-use node with mixed-use housing, office, and retail developing, um, south of I-80 and adjacent to Solano College. So I, I presented some of the outreach that we had done last time, which included a alternative survey and a workshop on alternatives. So most of those, um, survey takers and participants preferred the ideas presented in alternative three, which speaks to the desire for more commercial and community services. Several also mentioned concerns that I've already described, mainly the impacts to the area. Our general plan advisory committee members had a slight preference for the jobs corridor concept. We have also received specific requests and inquiries from property owners. Um, Douglas Carr, who spoke earlier, um, represents the three-acre vacant parcel marked number one here, um, on the, this map. The existing land use is industrial, and the property owner envisions a high-density residential use with rentals catering to students and staff. And as he mentioned, the adjoining area right here, um, the office building is for sale. The Garaventa property owners own several parcels marked number two. Um, this two right here, um, is about forty acres and currently designated as highway commercial. The property owner desires medium or high-density housing, but a high-image industrial or manufacturing use could be another potential option. At this three-acre site, the middle two, um, this is currently designated industrial business park, and the property owner envisions the site as a ground-floor commercial site with residential above, or as a standalone commercial site to support residential that could occur, um, at that first two I, I pointed out. The two to the far left is currently, um, industrial business park, but is desired, again, as high-density residential, which is asserted to be the only arrangement that would work due to its narrow length. Interviews with Solano College administration and the student group, Associated Students of Solano College, indicated support for the knowledge hub concept, with some students in the Solano College group describing desire for more affordable student housing close to campus. And then finally, there has been a request to change these three properties in Cordelia, which are in the, the southern tail end, um, to medium-density residential. So number one here in the yellow, that parcel, is currently designated office commercial, the only commercial designation to the south there. The parcel marked number two is industrial, and then parcel number three is an existing residential use that, uh, the property owner is hoping to reduce the density of. And given that these, given the direction that I just described for these properties, we'd love your thoughts on direction, especially in the context of the general area. So as I mentioned, the alternatives are just general concepts, and there are other ideas that we could explore tonight or incorporate that, um, perhaps balance these considerations, such as requiring some kind of commercial component with residential development. New development would be required to contribute to either a parkland fee or designate land for parks, and new needed connections would be determined as our land use pattern is, um, more established. Two other considerations include how, um, future planning might impact the area. So the interchange project, which should help to ease traffic in the area, and the potential for a new Sonoma-Marin area rail transit line, which could come to Solano County and connect Fairfield to Napa, Sonoma, and Marin Counties to the west. And, uh, two thousand twenty-one, um, Solano Transportation Authority report proposed four conceptual arrangements for train station options in Cordelia, which you can see in this diagram, um, down here at the bottom. So what we'd, we'd like to hear from you tonight. So Cordelia is an area that is in flux. Uh, what is the best way forward to achieve a balance between desired uses in the community? Next, we'll consider two areas just outside of the city limits. The first in, is the area in the sphere of influence west of Business Center Drive here, sometimes referred to as Dittmer West. That is approximately two hundred forty-seven acres. The second is just west of Paradise Valley, approximately a hundred eighty-five acres, but about a hundred forty-five of those acres are on steep slopes. The area west of Business Center Drive here is owned by two property owners. It is adjacent to the city limits on the south and southeast side. Um, Business Center Drive will be extended through this area as part of the interchange pro, uh, project. The existing general plan designates the area for very low-density residential, highway, commercial, and open space. The site is constrained with several gas lines and easements running through the parcels, and the entire site falling within an Alquist-Priolo zone, which is an area around a fault line, um, that requires geotechnical study. The area west of Lyons Road, uh, currently falls within what the general plan designates as the Rancho Solano North Master Plan Area. As I mentioned, portions are highly sloped. Um, the area is also in a tier-two fire threat area, which means there is higher risk from utility-related wire wildfires. And while these constraints must be considered, they do not preclude the possibility of development. They are quite large parcels with opportunity to support housing or jobs uses over the next thirty years in select parts. Um, so our property owner for the area west of Lyons Road noted an openness to various uses, including medium or high-density residential with a large amount of open space preserved, or possibly a hotel use component, um, but generally a flexibility. Uh, they did note in two thousand seven, before the recession, there were plans for a retirement community with, uh, four hundred twenty-six uses, uh, units of various types. West of Business Center Drive, both property owners indicated flexibility and openness to come into the city should they choose to develop. One property owner indicated a desire for residential with higher-density residential near Business Center Drive with some commercial component retained. So we'd like to know, what is your vision for these areas? And then finally, our last area for discussion includes connections, uh, in Fairfield. The Linear Park Trail remains an important cross-city connection. At the last meeting, council indicated desire to explore the possibility of using the Linear Park Trail for potential transit uses. So staff has reviewed the covenant with the Rails-to-Trails Conservancy, and it does state that easements can only be used for open space and recreation. If the council would like to proceed with developing public transit along the Linear Park Trail, they would need to negotiate with that, with that use with the Conservancy. However, it shouldn't preclude exploration of other modes of transportation, like stock bikes, scooters, or other mobility uses. Other plans in the works include the Linear Park Revitalization Plan, which creates nodes of activity along the trail from Pennsylvania Avenue to Dover Avenue. And given the direction at the last meeting, um, including the areas of, of change, uh, the team will explore other ways to improve the trail and enhance connections from the mall, North Texas, and the heart of Fairfield. That could look like nodes, or it could look like improvements along, um, residential streets to connect, uh, to the Linear Park Trail. So other connections ideas explored previously, um, with the alternatives included an improved connection from the train station to Travis Air Force Base. Travis is interested, is interested in creating an enhanced lease use area with housing and community uses, and has expressed interest in improving access to that. And community inputs, um, thus far had indicated support for that idea and that connection. Additionally, the city will soon have a significant community amenity in the Pacific Flyway Center. To aid connections, especially in Cordelia, Gold Hill Road could be redesigned to accommodate bicyclists, pedestrians, cars, and transit on a redesigned road, um, in a connection from the Gold Hill Interchange to the Flyway Center. So with these connection suggestions in mind, which ideas would you like us to keep exploring? Are there other connections that we should look into? So with that, I will take us back to our discussion on Cordelia. Um, I'm happy to flip through any slide that you would like, um, but we'd like to know, what is your vision for this area? What are the desired uses, and where should they occur?
Councilwoman White, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been hearing for a long time about the issues We've been hearing for a long time about the issues in the Cordelia area, and we all know them very well. And we are, we are listening despite what people say. So what I, what I want to do is really focus on what we've been hearing for a lot of years. I was born and raised here, so I know very well how this has developed. It's actually an area that should not have been either a baby barbell or a big barbell or anything else. You know, we, when the city leaders decided to do that, I believe it was a mistake. But I love our people out there, and I want them to have parks. I want them to have coffee shops, and I'd like to see some retail, which means that we need to put that in the, in the general plan. We need to do that. They do have one of the best parks in the whole city. We just finished those up, you know, a couple of years ago. It is the best park in the whole city, except for if you go to Rockville Hills, different type of park. So they do have that, and they have very nice little league fields and so on in that area. They do need that infrastructure, so I'm looking for that. I am looking for things that they can do there. I do know that stores, because I've called myself, some of the big stores don't want to go, actually come really anywhere in Fairfield, as much as we're building out on the northeast, they want to see the rooftops first, and that's what I get. One way that I think that can be changed is the love that people have here and, and the passion that you show. Get on those people over there, call them up, and get some signatures going. That's how we have got Trader Joe's here. It was brought here by residents. Also, our Barnes &amp; Noble, they didn't think Fairfield people read, I guess. Turns out we were one of the best stores ever. So it does come down to residents having to pull more when, when I try anyway, they aren't, they aren't so open. So I just want you all to know that I, for one, have called and looked at Sprouts and others like that. So I understand, we can't make them come if there isn't, if they don't believe it, but I do believe that some urging, serious urging with some passion, might help. And I also would hope that our city staff, I know they do listen to everything that's going on, and that they work very hard, which I already know you do. And we do have newer staff now, but to double down on it, that's what we, we need to do. Because, you know, going out, when I go out to visit in Cordelia, I mean, you do have to go ways to, you know, to have sushi or, or anything else. So that's what I'd like to see out there myself, and that's what our residents want there. So I'll throw that out for now.
Thank you. Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question, probably to staff, probably to our attorney. Let's take Nelson Hill, and they say they want a park. Who owns Nelson Hill? The city doesn't own it, right?
No, it's private property.
It's private property.
The Nelson family.
Probably so. What I'm looking for is, if the city wants a park, can we make a CFD, Community Facilities District, a special district? Because somebody's got to pay for it. How can, how can we do that? Right? And you don't have to have the answer now, but this is what I'm looking for. Everybody wants another grocery store. The margins on a grocery store is probably 3%. That's the reason another grocery store is not here, because you have Costco, you have Safeway, they don't want to spend the millions of dollars. But how can you entice them? Can you do it with fee deferrals, fee credits? They have to make money, or they're not going to build a couple million-dollar building, and it's not going to happen. But if we started looking at financing, and not creative financing, but outside the box, you probably could get a lot of things. They want a community services or a community center, right? Again, we don't own the property, but can we put it in a district where the citizens get to vote on this? Because it's going to be expensive. I mean, it's, city's not just going to buy it and give it away, because other people in other parts of the city would want the same exact thing. But this is something where, if you want infrastructure, and I think there's not a person in here that doesn't agree that Pittman Road needs to be changed and widened, and I talked to the city manager yesterday, and I don't even think it's on the radar of anybody. And that's a state project. We spent 25 or 30 million for North Texas Overpass, correct? And that was funded through the business tax that we've collected over 25 or 30 years. So those are the obstacles, but now how can we go around or over or under the obstacles? And I think that's what needs to be defined, is these are the issues. We understand, I'd like to go to another store, I'd like to go to another restaurant. You talk about the old truck stop, and one of the things when I met with Joe is developers bond, they have to get bonds to pay for roads. Cities usually don't pay for the roads, but they transferred all the bond, the bond debt, onto this one piece of property. And if memory serves me, and I was talking to Cap Moy, the bonding debt on that's about $7 a square foot before you even get to the price of the land. So you can see that that's probably a pretty big, pretty big obstacle. Can it be overcome? Maybe. You know, money, money will overcome a lot of issues, but now how do we pay for it? So going forward, you talked about, you know, which option we want. Again, in meetings where if people want to park and you want to, say, Nelson Hill Park, you want that to be a park, okay, we can make it. We can design it in our plans as a park, but if it's still a park in 50 years, or if it's still dirt in 50 years, or the gentleman from the trades union, where they have so much industrial space, what are you going to do with that? That's why all that property, and that's why a lot of the property got rezoned, because there's not a use for it. So things change over 30 years. 30 years ago, nobody knew what Amazon was, maybe a bookstore if they were in existence then. COVID, you can see what's happened in the last two years. So to Mr. Zone's suggestion, or maybe it was Brenda's, that we think out more than 10 or 15 years, yeah, we're looking to go into 2050. So I'm not opposed to picking a section, and Joe, this is what you wanted, pick a section. Okay, you want to put houses there? No. What do you want to put there? And then figure out how that would work, and it might take a little longer, but connectivity through the Linear Park Trail, and this is one of the things, if you guys saw the email today from that youngster, youngster, he's graduating from Cal and agreeing urban planning, and one of the things he talks about is connectivity with bicycles. Gas is six bucks a gallon. I don't know what it's going to be in 30 years, but it's not going to be any cheaper. So how can we, how can we make it, how can we connect everybody? So this is what I'm looking for in this plan, and not so much, you know, 200 acres or 500 acres, but, but knock off a chunk and figure out, okay, if this is what we want, what do we think the barriers are? And then let's figure out how to get around those barriers. The barrier is going to be money. It might slow us down, but the dirt's not going anywhere. I mean, it truly isn't. Right? And we also have to bear in mind, and we talk about the property owners, and people get mad when they're selling to developers. I think if we all live out in Cordelia-Green Valley area, our house was built by a developer, right? I mean, I remember when there was nothing out here, and over the last 50 years, people have moved there. So I think we owe them that consideration too, but it can be done. But, does that make sense, Mayor? And I look at staff, too.
Certainly does.
I mean, just, pick a spot. You want a community center in this parcel, you know, and the schools, and Quentin Voice brought it up, we haven't talked Solano College. Of course, Solano College hadn't talked us, two-way street. That being said, student housing. You know that our Solano College two-year degree is one of the very few colleges in the state of California. You can get a four-year degree. Jim DeClough had a big hand in that, right? You come here, you get a four-year degree, and people, ah, you don't want a four-year degree. Oh, yeah, you do. Yeah, you do. Talk to Jim, he'll tell you what it's all about, and then you can go 10 miles down the road to Vacaville and get a really good job at the biomedical places. So there, I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do, and we can all work together. It'll take some time, but one thing, and then I'll be quiet, is there's going to be more housing. California desperately, desperately needs housing. What I'm concerned, what I heard tonight concerns me is that the residents only want single-family, they don't want high-density. Folks, I'm here to tell you, the houses out there, the median price is almost $600,000. I don't know where your kids are going to go to, when they go to school, where they're going to live, or when they come back, and for us that are getting a little older than grandkids. I don't know about you, but I don't have a couple million dollars, you know, to help your kids and grandkids out. So we have to have housing, we can all work together. So, anyway, Mayor, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues?
You want to go?
Madam Kirk, please.
Yeah, we have a public speaker, and whenever you want to take them, I can call them up.
We have one speaker now?
Yeah.
Oh, two. Let's take them, please.
Okay.
And then we'll come back to council discussion.
Monica Brown, did you want to come speak?
Oh, well, when's your people before?
We already completed, yeah.
Well, it started at six, so my...
Welcome Supervisor Brown.
Hi. Hey, Harry. What I see is Thursday night. So my name is Monica Brown, represent District Two. First off, I'm in favor of Ukraine and what they're doing, and so I wore my colors today. My concern right now happens to be the Smart Train, and so I was blown away at the last board meeting hearing that. So here's something that I've learned being a supervisor. Once anything is put in the general plan, it can't be changed, because it was in the general plan. So when we talk about a park, Cordelia Hills, the elementary school, there's been land right there waiting for over 20 years for a park. So just FYI for that. So I'm reading through this stuff with the Smart Train. No, I didn't print all 96 pages, because I knew I only had three minutes. And this was done in 29, 20, sorry, April 29, 2019. And the cost of two options that are indicated here are approximately $780 million to $1.3 billion, and could be implemented in four to six years once funding is identified. So as I'm reading through this, I haven't figured out where the money's coming from. So I called a friend of mine, yes, hard to believe, Monica does have a few, and she said that in two years, the Smart Train has a ballot to renew the sales tax measure that's paying for the Smart Train at the moment. So if that fails, who knows what's going to happen with the Smart Train. But for those of you who aren't sure, the goal is, is that the Smart Train is down to Novato, and what they want to do is they want to connect from Novato, Highway 37, which they want to make a toll road, which is wrong, Highway 12 corridors between Marin County, et cetera, all the way through American Canyon, Vallejo, and the Susun-Fairfield areas. Gosh, guys, for those of us who get caught behind that train that comes one day, one time a day or twice a day, always seems to be when Rodriguez is getting out. I'm amazed we haven't lost any children, and I hope we never do. But the key with all of this is the railroad corridor connecting the existing Smart, Novato-Hamilton Station near Novato, and the existing Capitol Corridor Station at Fairfield-Susun is approximately 41 miles long. Okay, so way back when, when I was running, I told everybody to vote no on Regional Measure Three. Guess what? The money that we're paying to have San Jose have BART is not even going to start now till 2034. So I ask you, where's the funding? Where's all of this happening? And to be honest with you, we do have, in my section of Cordelia Villages, we do have duplexes, so it can be done. The problem is, where's everybody going to live? I don't know, but frankly, I like the fact that I have a Safeway and a Costco, because they're both union stores. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think this was mine.
All right, George Kennedy.
Put my hands in my pocket, so I don't touch the podium and make it more crooked. Mr. Mayor, council members, George Kennedy, 30-plus-year resident of Cordelia-Green Valley area. My biggest question that I have tonight is, do we have a, we're showing, you know, Cordelia-Green Valley, but there's no overlay of the STA plans of what they have. Because when I was looking up here, and she was showing some of Sino's comments about what he'd like to make medium-density, that's all in the STA plans to reroute 680 through, by the, right by the high school on that, on those vacant parcels, and go right through that business section. So why would we be entertaining rezoning that when it's already pretty much spoken for, for STA and the state of California to go right through there? And I think before anything more is done with this southern section, that there should be an overlay to show what the plans are for transportation for the next 30 years. And that's all I have to say. Let's think smart, let's think ahead, and do what's right. Thanks.
Thank you, George. Vice Mayor DeCarlo, please.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you to all the speakers, too. Just to follow up on what Councilman Tim said regarding housing, I mean, we all understand that we're going to need some housing, probably high-density. But if we don't address the concerns of the Cordelia people now, in 30 years, I mean, we're going to be, the people are going to be right back here. In fact, in a year, they're going to be right back here, and in two years, and it's going to keep going on. You know, are there, are there more services needed out there? Absolutely, there are. And I think Chuck had said, and, you know, regarding taking one section and looking at, you know, what are the obstacles to putting some retail out there? What are the obstacles to putting, you know, a small coffee shop or a restaurant? Because, and I'd have to ask staff that, what are the obstacles? Because it seems like the people in Cordelia have been coming to us for years, wanting more, and it seems like they're not getting more. So that's kind of what I'd like to know, is what, what are the obstacles stopping this from happening? Because the people are very passionate that live out there, obviously. I mean, we hear from them all the time, not only from Cordelia, obviously, from every, every neighborhood in the city. But, you know, the people out there do show up, and they do comment, and they do tell us what they want. My fear is that, is anything going to get done? Because if we, we need to take our time with this general plan, it's going to be, I mean, this is serious, like, you know, Councilman Tim had said, our children, our grandchildren, you know, they're going to be here 30 years from now. We probably won't, but they will be. So, um, thank you. But, yeah, I'm pretty healthy. So, anyway, no, but I do think, you know, if we don't listen to the people that are out there, because this has been going on, been on the council for a long time, and it seems like, you know, the more we talk about it, but it's not, not getting done. And I, I don't know who the speaker was that said, yeah, we have new leadership in our staff right now, okay? And I think it's really important that our new leadership looks at this, and I think they will. I'm confident they will, I really am. And we have, you know, new staff members, not only the leaders, but, you know, the people in, you know, our middle management that are looking at this, too. I just think, you know, I, I feel for the people out there. I think that, you know, we all drive through Cordelia on 680 or drive out there, and you're right, after Safeway and Costco, there's nothing out there, except one big gas station supermarket, which isn't a supermarket. So, yeah, I think we do need to take our time and really look at how we can help the citizens out there. You know, somebody had mentioned schools, you know, I know the schools are crowded. I mean, I go into the schools still, still doing work in there, Monica. Okay? But, you know, that's a whole separate issue. But no, I really do think we need to take our time and look at what we can do out there, even if it's one section at a time, because maybe that's what we need to do, is to look at it one section at a time and build up from there. So those are my comments.
Councilwoman Bertoni, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone. So tired of these things. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and for sharing your time and energy to help facilitate this process. I really appreciate it. And we all, we all appreciate it, and it's, and it's the fuel that makes a project like this work the way it should, so your input is essential. I agree with the speaker who said that land use should reflect our current community and its needs and our future community. So we're, we're here now vision casting, and you're asking, you know, what, what are you looking for in a plan? So what I'm looking for in a plan is very specific. Another speaker mentioned this as well. You know, Fairfield has become and remained pretty much a bedroom community. You know, Fairfield has become and remained pretty much a bedroom community, with so many of our residents, um, you know, including me, having to commute out of the city with our, uh, for our job opportunities, um, for retail opportunities, for dining opportunities. We have to change that.
Yes.
And this is how we do it with this plan. We, we do it with Fairfield, is Fairfield Forward 2050? So, I'm thinking, now, what we do now, and looking forward to 2020, that needs to reflect what's happening now, and what will be, and what we can project into the future. So, I'm looking for opportunities now to update this plan in a way that will create the opportunities that this community needs now, and that this community will need in 30 years from now. What kind of opportunities am I looking for? Very specific. I'm looking for opportunities of robust commercial, um, development opportunities, retail opportunities. I'm looking for job opportunities, so that so many of us don't have to keep leaving here with our disposable income and going out and spending it at other places, and working other places. I'm looking for adequate service opportunities. The services currently are not adequate, and we're, and we're saying, we all know, there's going to have to be some modicum of housing in this, in this, in this plan, but we can't just put, we can't just say, "Well, the state of California need, you know, affordable housing, so we have to build some more housing." What about the services? It, it, to me, it makes, and I'm no expert city planner, it makes no sense to me, to have all of this new housing and, and new, whether it's high-density, medium-density, but you, it's people there who need services. And so, I'm looking for more service opportunities to coincide with any additional housing. You hit the nail on the head, transportation opportunities. That's a, you made a very good point. What, how does STA's plans play into this general plan update? We need to know that. We need to figure that out. Dining opportunities? A friend of mine called me and asked me, said, you know, "We're, we're passing through your, your city, and they were kind of in this area, and said, 'Look, we wanna stop for dinner, where should we go?'" Hmm. Hmm. Wow. Wow. So, this is really, this is really our opportunity to, to get it right this time. Educational opportunities, more housing, more people, children, you know, young adults, educational opportunities. The, they're not adequate right now, today. The schools are overcrowded. So, those are the kind of opportunities I'm looking for in this general plan update, and I know that, you know, and I agree with everyone who says that, "Let's not rush it now, let's, let's get it right, as right as we can." It's our opportunity to dream with our eyes open, and that's what we're doing. So, you know, I just hope that we can answer the gentleman's question, "What in God's name have you done? What have you done for this city?" Is this general plan update about the, who is it for? Perfect question. It's for the people of this city. Thank you for holding us accountable, thank you for your input, and thank you for your vision, and you know what? You're looking at a city council who can get it done. So, we, we'll answer your question for you. So, stay tuned. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I should like to make a couple of observations for you. Do you remember a few years ago, out in the Cordelia area, in the Costco area, there were folks who were leaving the city of Vallejo, moving over the hill because they could find, and I have to be careful how I say this, they could find better housing, better opportunities, and better educational opportunities for their children. Now, skip a little bit from the west to the east. Couple of months ago, I spent some time with a physician and his wife, an elementary school teacher, and I asked them, "Why did you move into this area?" And the, and the doctor said, "It's because I work at UCSF in San Francisco," he's a physician, "and his wife is an elementary school teacher over in Elk Grove." And I said, "How long does it take you to get to Elk Grove from your home here?" And she said, "I can leave here and be in my classroom in 52 minutes." And her husband said, "It takes me a little bit longer to get to San Francisco." But we picked this place because of its geographic location. I think it's important for us all to realize, too, Interstate 80 is a major freight corridor. The Smart Train, and Monica, thank you very much for making it very clear how difficult that's going to be because of all the finances, but it was almost 18 years ago that Congressman Mike Thompson invited some of us to ride the train from Cordelia up over and into Napa. And he said, "This is my vision for the future. Funding is always going to be the problem, but if we can come together for a common cause and a realization that Fairfield can continue to be a very desirable place to raise your families." And some of us have never lived in apartments, but I recognize, because housing prices are so high now, that the apartment or the condo, or the fourplex is the only option they have. So, we need to get it right, and get it right now. And your being here tonight certainly has given us a lot more to think about. And Councilman Tim, I want to thank you for meeting with the residents, too. I think that was a very, very prudent thing to do, because it certainly educated all of us as well.
It was, it was my pleasure, and not surprisingly, they had very good ideas. So, when I talk about CFDs or special districts or financing, these are things that we can, we can start looking at, but understand that it will be expensive. It will be expensive if we don't do it, it's gonna be expensive if we do it. If the expense is the same, but your quality of life is better, then we'll just figure out how to pay for it. And we need, and we need your ideas. And as far as to what the gentleman said, what have we done? I just started listing everything, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the business park off Highway 12. Some of those businesses in there, proprietary information, but some of them provide over seven figures a year in sales tax in the city of Fairfield. Some of those are national companies and international companies. Uh, there's, you'd be amazed, and I'm still amazed, and I see a new business because it, it looks like a warehouse, and you go inside and it's a factory, right here, and I had no, I had no clue. So, if I didn't have a clue, it would be hard for me to expect you to even know what's going on. And that probably is our biggest failure, but things are changing, is if we give you the information that we possess, then you, too, can help us make a decision. But if we make a decision, and you guys don't know why we made that decision, because we have the information and you don't, then that's not right either, because that's what leads to meetings like this. So, and Harry, or, I'm sorry, Mayor, uh, if we talk about STA, now, we have the overlays, and you're, you led the STA. We have seen where the 80, 680, 12, 680, the probably the last, what, mile of 680 is gonna be like Air Base Parkway. There's gonna be a brand-new 680, and we know where it's going, and it will be in conjunction with the general plan, but the issue is, is we never told anybody else, because we didn't, we don't know who's interested and who's not. So, we can get a lot deeper into the woods, right? And I'm looking at the city manager, and, and like Pam Bertoni has said, is, "We'll get it right, might take a little longer." But other than our housing element, which is required by law, we have to have that done by a certain day, but the rest of this, it's, it's not a horse race, so. Anyway, Mayor, I, I really, really am interested in, in starting to look at the CFDs and the special districts on how we can start, you're not gonna fund it today, but in the future, then, when it comes time to purchase property, that the city can purchase it. And I saw today, school district is short $38 million. So, man, they're giving with one hand and taking away with the other, so, it's a battle, we'll get it done. Thank you very much. And Joe, thank you for setting up that meeting, too, I appreciate it.
Councilman Tendura, your observations, please. You have a very fresh look, and I'm, I'm curious to see the kinds of insights that you have.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So, for me, I think this, I, you know, in agreement with my colleagues and with regards, and the public with regards to ensuring that we hear everyone's, um, vision and what they see in the future of our city, coming, I come from a standpoint of, I myself live in high-density housing right now, because it's the only thing I can afford, um, along with other, you know, people of my own age, and now my siblings. And, um, I think one piece that, you know, we mentioned Sunol College, and for me, that's a big part of this community, and also about, it's a big part of a lot of us growing up in education, and it's, it's a big piece. And so, and now it holds high school students, right? So, we have an early college high school there, and we had not, we have not talked about that. And now, not only do we have college students going out there, but we also have younger people traveling out on those roads. And like Mr. Vois said, you know, my nephew goes there, all, full disclosure, but I'm just saying, I, you know, I understand when, like, when he has to come home, he can't just walk home, he can't just take a bike, there's no connections, there's no connectivity for him out there right now. And so, even just to cross over into, um, the fast food across the freeway, that's, I think that's the overpass he was talking about, that's, it's so dangerous. And I've seen myself also, you know, people, young people trying to cross over from that point. So, yeah, I'm in agreement with needing to be more forward-thinking and thinking about, you know, what's happening there right now. And I know, um, I sit on the CBOC for Sunol College, and we've also talked about, you know, student housing in that area, and so I think that, you know, being open to those types of ideas are really going to allow us to ensure that our community is being taken care of, um, at every level, and it also is an opportunity to create balance. And what I mean by that is, ensuring that one side of the city and the other side of our cities both have similar amenities, that it's not just one side has all the restaurants and one side has all the housing, where there is a balance in our community, so that both sides are being fully serviced and feel like they're a part of our city. Because I know that people in Cordelia might feel out in the outskirts, like, "We don't care, we don't listen," or people, you know, in my district might feel that same way, because they're not as connected to City Hall as maybe we would, I would want them to be, or we would want them to be. So, I think this is a great opportunity for us to, you know, as it's been mentioned, take it into chunks and really hear people out, to ensure that our community and our city is moving forward, um, in a way that is taking into consideration what our city's gonna look like in 30 years. You know, I hopefully will still be here, hopefully, you know, with some of my colleagues here, and so, I, I hope that I can look back on these moments and be like, "Yes, we did, we made good decisions, you know, we made some good choices, and we made these good choices because, you know, at the individuals on the dais, and then because we took the time to listen to what, um, our citizens had to say." Uh, so, those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Tonason, former plan, former planning commissioner. Scott, your observations, please.
I feel old. So, this is the, you know, my take on it. We set up here and we take notes, we listen to everybody, I, I certainly take notes on all of the speakers. One of the downfalls of going last on a seven-member council is that they've spoken about everything I want to speak about. Um, you know, I love the direction, I love the, the passion that everyone puts into this, and certainly the passion of the, the Cordelia residents. I would agree with my colleagues, we're, we're gonna get this right, we're gonna get a, we're gonna get a shot at it. Time, money, slowing down, I like that, but, again, all of my notes have been addressed, I think, I think you guys made some fine comments tonight. 30 years, I don't think I'll be here, but, that's all for me, Mayor. I'll be 100.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Moy, please.
I, I have a question, actually. Councilman Tim and I were talking back and forth here, but I wanted you all to hear what we were talking about. If, if, there's a lot of private, obviously, landowners, and they want to do certain things, what does it look like if the city buys pieces of that land and then we go with that? I mean, I know, it, it, you know, it probably costs a lot of money, but, um, it's just money. Uh, I, I don't mean that, but, that's something we can think about, yes? I mean, we...
Yeah, we, we can certainly think about it, but that money's gotta come from somewhere.
Well, yeah.
Sorry, I'll be Debbie Downer with, when it comes to the finances.
I, I, uh, I ain't gonna let you come up with all the ideas and spend our money, we're gonna do that, too. Because, you know, if you, I'm just saying, that's something that we should consider, um, you know, lopping off of people, making offers, obviously, I mean, just like we wouldn't go to somebody here and say, "Oh, your house there, we want that for a coffee shop now, so, we're gonna take it from you with eminent domain because your neighbors want it." Um, you know, I get it, I totally get land ownership, I totally get the Constitution, but what I'm saying is, I think it's something that we should look at. We should look at, um, some of those areas and these people say they can't develop it and this and that, well, um, maybe we need to put our money where our mouth is, is what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, yeah.
You did, thank you. Allison, thank you very much. Is there anything else you need from, from us, or any, any other directions? David?
Uh, I think we can move on to our next area of discussion, if that's all right, unless there's any other comments or questions for Cordelia.
Okay.
All right, so, our new neighborhoods, these two areas on the outs, just on the outskirts of the city, um, is there any vision for, for these areas? They're, they're large parcels, um, they are constrained, but as I mentioned, that does not preclude development, just needs to be taken under consideration. Um, and both, uh, the property owners that we spoke with for these areas are flexible.
Who owns that land, west of Paradise Valley, Lyons Road, 185 acres?
That is the Sango family.
Okay.
Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, this has been around probably about 10 years, they're kind of looking at high-density. And you know where we're talking about, it's on, it's on Lyons Road, correct?
Yes, just to the west of Paradise Valley Golf Course.
Right, and currently, it's in the county, and one of the things that I'm very concerned about, I think everybody is, is, is the urban interface now with wildland fires.
Yeah.
So, how far, and this is what we talked about at a meeting, show me where our urban limit line is, or our sphere of influence, how far out are we gonna keep going out into the county area? You really can't grow anything on it, but, what I'm afraid of doing is, let's say we make it, okay, we'll make it high-density or medium-density, but nothing ever happens. Now, in 20 years, maybe climate's changed, who knows? But now they say, "Well, you know what? Now we wanna put in high-density." And we go, "Well, no, it might be better for something else." Because this is kind of a crapshoot, a guess, an educated guess, what we're gonna, what we'd like to see in the future, but things change. So, if you're looking specifically at this property, I'll be kind of honest with you, I'm not even looking to annex it. I'm, I'm really not. Uh, I don't know, that's, that's just my feeling right now, and unless I had a persuasive, persuasive argument, say from the landowner or developer or something, I'm tired of sprawl. We're, we're going out, we're going out, what are we, 42 square miles?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Forty-two.
And from the northeast quadrant, you know, with the train station-specific plan, and now Cordelia, I, I, I've had the, uh, great pleasure of running Code Three in a police car from one end of this town to the other, red light and siren as fast as I can go, and on some days, it'll take you 20, 25 minutes. And that means, if I was driving my own truck, that would be a 40-minute trip. So, I'm, like I said, I'm not real keen on doing anything with that property right now. It's in the county, and the county can kind of worry about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Allison, you want to continue with the additional slides, please?
Oh, sure. Any other comments from council members?
Moy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilman Tim... I agree with Councilwoman Tim about that property and not looking at annexation right now. Our city is almost as the size of San Francisco, it's close, and I never thought, when I was a little girl, of course, that it'd ever be this big, but then who does? But the county also has been talking out loud about building homes, and they have been assigned from the state to build homes. So I don't know what they're thinking of, but they're welcome to that, as far as I'm concerned, yeah.
Thank you.
Were there any other thoughts or comments on west of Business Center Drive, the sphere of influence over here?
Councilwoman Tim?
Thank you. That's the Dittmer property, is this where Business Center's going to punch through?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to have, it'll probably be, what, four lanes, two lanes each direction, separated by a median? Again, right now, I think it's grazing, there's not much out there. Look at the proximity, though, now to Highway 12, especially if it punches through. If you're there, you can be in downtown Napa in 10 minutes, 15 minutes. You know, we have hotels out in this area now, I know more coming. Our transit occupancy tax, DOT, gives us $2 million, $3 million a year. You can imagine what it would do if you had nice hotels there. And the ones in Cordelia, on the Green Valley side, are usually, usually they're pretty full, and they're getting expensive, and try to get one at Bottle Rock, you know? So I envision that as, as a commercial center, perhaps, and the reason is, is you're far enough out that it's an easy on, easy off, and it gives you more shopping opportunities. People, you know, you want a pizza place, or you want a restaurant, you have to understand, this property's worth millions of dollars, and for somebody that owned an ice cream store, and it's like, "I need 1,200 square feet," and you rent 6,000 a month, you got to sell a heck of a lot of ice cream. So I think we need to be very cautious, and I know what we want, but what is, what is realistic? But again, you're, you're right, but to Green Valley, Susun Valley, Napa Valley, I think commercial, and then probably, and I hate to use this term, I know it offends some people, but agritourism, this is the gateway to our valley, and pretty much the gateway to Napa Valley, so I think we should really, really look at that. As far as housing, yeah, you're right between two major freeways. We are a transportation quarter, like the mayor said, that's why a lot of places want to come here, they get their trucks on, get their trucks off, and it'll, by then, hopefully, all the freeways will be, it'll be easy, it'll be easy for somebody to pull into a hotel there, you get hotels full, you'll get restaurants, you'll get restaurants, so, that's my idea on it, anyway.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have another request to speak card, please.
Yes, we have Douglas Smith.
This is in regards to what you spoke about here, about this parcel of land. Is this the parcel of land that currently contains a water reservoir on it, that's up back behind vintage Green Valley, southwest Business Center Drive?
Just below.
Just below?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so I understand where this is now, this is directly west of the Green Valley subdivision, down there, so, okay. So here we, here we are in a position, I'm glad we're looking at this right now, okay? We don't want any PD overlays, okay, and I know that's within our general plan, but this looks like it's something that's coming up in the future, right? So I would like to just mention, in my three minutes here, that here's another section that the citizens out there in Cordelia, in Green Valley, in Susun Valley, they would not like to see a four- and five-story building that's obstructing the vill, the hills and the views out there. So if we can develop this area, but keep it very low-profile, so you keep the beauty of the surrounding valley, and that's pretty much, pretty much what we wanted, you know, you know, in lieu of those apartments out there that are sitting at the entrance to Susun Valley, instead of having four stories, that would have been much more acceptable. And let's not forget, we still have that, that study, that is, is that study still going on for the high-rise apartments, the high-density? Okay, so is that study underway? And, and we really don't know how accurate that study's going to be, right? Because the other apartments aren't built yet, and we haven't had the flow-through of traffic from all of that occupation. So that study is, I mean, I know the developers paying for it, but is it going to be accurate, you know? But the main concern there is, all of this traffic is going to funnel through that Green Valley Business Center Drive intersection. That's a huge concern for everybody out there, along with the schools and, you know, the lack of services, so the traffic is huge. We don't want this to become another Camden Avenue, like down on San Jose, where it's, you know, just wall-to-wall cars, nobody can get out. And until you do something with, like, maybe on Abernathy, or open up, or create some kind of an on-ramp, an off-ramp, for those citizens in those apartments, in the vines apartments, to unload and offload onto the freeway there, they're all going to be coming through that intersection, and it's going to be a nightmare. And considering kids crossing over that freeway, going to Rodriguez and the middle school out there, too.
Please conclude.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts on west of Business Center Drive? Okay, so our last area of discussion is connections, we've already started to touch on them as we were talking about Cordelia, but we're, we'd like to know which concepts you'd like to see carried forward, what ideas you'd like us to continue to explore, or new ideas that you might have about connections. And I spoke in my presentation about looking for ways to connect to the Linear Park and surrounding neighborhoods, perhaps more nodes to connect our activity centers, the Travis Air Force Base connection to the train station, and then the connection along Gold Hill Road to the Flyway Center. So we welcome your thoughts and direction on improving connections in Fairfield.
So, quick, it sounds like there's a holdup there. David?
No, I can, yeah, so, there's a couple of aspects right now that we're working on actively, and it's being led by our Public Works Department. One is basically the joint water rates, so we're selling them water as well as Benicia. And so there's a water agreement that has to be executed, and I'm not at all attempting to throw our neighboring city under the bus, but that has been a part of the holdup, is getting those rates out of, out of Benicia. The other is, for, in order for us to tap into the pipeline to supply them the water, there has to be an easement underneath 680 for that pipeline to come across. And, and so I don't know the exact status of that, but I know that that's been an ongoing discussion between our staff, City of Benicia staff, and the, and the Pacific Flyway, you know, advocates.
Any other comments or que...
Could you explain a little bit more about blowing up my damn idea about the linear park and a train? Really, what, what do we have to do? I mean, we do need that linear trail to stop being a crime alleyway, okay? It's ugly, it's butt-ugly, there are parts that are nice, I won't ride on it anymore, but we need to fix it up, and it needs to give access to people riding bikes, and we do need to have the little activity modes like we've talked about and planned along there. But, and that does help connect the city from, well, not all the way out to Cordelia, and it sounds like maybe they don't want to be connected to us. They want their own community center and everything out there. But, but, yeah, so I support developing, developing that in a way that it's safe, that people can't live there and bother other people or hurt people, and that it does really work, that people have to be convinced that it's safe, whatever that takes, as far as planning, so they'll use it again. It used to be usable. We have to do that, and I am, I was serious about having some kind of a, a train or something along there, something that went all the way out to the base, and we do need a connection out to the base as well, excuse me. We've got to do that. The base is a, a big part of Fairfield, it's a huge part, the biggest economic drivers we have, it is. So we have to be connected to them, and, you know, those folks like to come in and have food here in town, and we do have restaurants, I'm not going to name them off right now, but they're very good downtown. Anyway, so those, that's my thoughts. My thoughts are, yes, revitalize it, yes, get it cleaned up, so people living on either side of it are not having issues, and we do need to connect the city. And the people from one part of the city should be able to get out to the college, where they can get a four-year degree, or their two-year degrees, their nursing, firefighting, all of those things, and people that we need in our city. So this is not just a driver of, you know, people visiting, this is about economies, and we have to fix it. This is a waste, the way it is now, it's a waste, and it's sad, so.
Yep. Thanks, Councilwoman Moy. And yeah, just to clarify, the transit may not be in the cards, but we can definitely look at bikes and activation and concepts like that.
Other comments or questions? Councilwoman Tan Juro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with adding, like, I like the ideas of the nodes throughout the Linear Park, I think I've been a proponent of, like, as long as, you know, with others on the, on the dais, about, you know, creating more, making it more and more nicer place to take a walk, I don't know, probably not the most professional way to put that, but especially in certain areas of the city, you know, the Linear Park is very, it looks very drastic from one end to the other, it doesn't all look the same, and it would be just be, it would be great to be able to have a trail that is consistent and all green and friendly. This last year, there has been a big improvement, I feel, with regards to our PD, you know, doing more routes and being more, having more presence on there. So I have seen an increase of people, I know, even like my own, like my mom and her, and her lady friends, they take walks out there, and she's made comments before where, you know, she'll call me, like, I, we've, we have never been able to do that before, and I've lived here my entire life. And so for her to just give me that feedback is really great, and they find all these fruit trees, and she's telling, I'm like, "Mom, please do not pick the fruit off the fruit trees that you find, like, just stay away, just stay on the trail," right? So it's just nice to know that my, you know, other people are now feeling safe to use it, and so I do appreciate that, but I do also, you know, there is a need definitely to, to increase activity on it, whether that is nodes or making it more green, and I know that if we do do that, then it, it does give a sense of pride to have that trail in your backyard or in your neighborhood. You know, you'll, it's, it's something you can, you know, invite others to join you on, on a bike ride, or you feel safe going down to the mall, or, you know, all the way to the college, so, yes, so that's, those are my, those are my thoughts on the trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tim, please.
Yeah, talking about the Pacific Flyway, if and when it ever goes, and it goes as envisioned, it'll be probably like the Monterey Bay Aquarium. So where are people going to park? So let's go back to Highway 12, or the Dittmer property, the punch-through, right? And to Councilwoman Moy's claim on the linear trail, if we're thinking out 30, 40 years, I think autonomous cars are going to be here, and how are we going to get, if you want people to come to Fairfield, and you want to go to the Flyway Center, and the part of that reliever, we call it the Jepson Reliever Route, where you can get on, basically at Napa, and go all the way to Vacaville, and never getting on a freeway? But that's one of the things, and you talk about big buildings, big buildings belong close to, high-density belongs close to transportation centers. The farther you get out, then the lower it goes. But if this area is envisioned for hotels and a restaurant, Pacific Flyway Center is just a hop, skip, and a jump on the other side of 8680, are autonomous cars in our future? Yeah, they're coming, I don't know when, but like Disneyland, you get on, I mean, you just get on, there's, there's not even a conductor. One of the things we're talking about going into Susun, remember? So, yeah, I'm kind of encouraged to think outside the box, is it going to be expensive? Yeah, it's going to be expensive. But if this is what the general plan is for, knowing that we could put parking here, we could feed you here, we could take you across the freeway to the Flyway Center, then it makes no sense then to muddle it up and put something that's not conducive to both ends, right? So linear trail, I think, needs to connect the entire city, and I think this is something we need to do when development comes in, whether it's retail, whether it's high-density, whatever it is, is that we see the transportation mode, right? How are we going to get bikes here? How are we going to get pedicabs, you know, whatever it is? But so you can say we can walk from here to here, and not throw roadblocks up based on, on development, so. But especially in this area, this is why people move out into the Green Valley area, but this is where somebody on Dover or Nightingale could jump on the linear trail and get to the Flyway Center. I mean, this is, we start taking cars off the road, I don't know if that's ever going to happen, but the more we take off, the better it is. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Allison, what else do you have for us, please?
Oh, that, that was the, the three areas for this evening, unless anyone else has other ideas that they'd like to throw out there as we continue to think about what concepts and ideas we want to pull into our preferred alternative.
Mayor, Mayor, can I ask, and again, I hark back to this, because I'm sure consultants are looking at us like, "Holy smoke." But pick a piece of property, the gentleman that just came up and spoke, and he says, "Ah, you know, out there, it's got to be low." Okay, low what? Low what? Commercial? And you, and you just can't say retail, because then I'm going to ask you, what kind of retail? I probably haven't been into a store unless it's a meat market or dry cleaning, my retail is on a phone, and next day, Amazon's dropping it off at my house, so.
That's low-profile to preserve the beauty of the hills around.
Got it, got it. But this is what I, this is what I think is most important, is pick a piece of property, and it could be 500 acres, or it could be two acres, but if they say they want to park there, then we come back and we look at it, right? You want to park there, this is what a park is we think might cost. How are we going to pay for it? Again, CFD, special districts, I'm not the money guy, I don't know, but is that legal? And is it doable? Because it's easy to kind of kick the can down the road and say, "Well, somebody else will deal with it." This is what we want, but we're not going to tell you how to finance it, we're not going to tell you how to build it, and then it's just a big waste of time. So that's what I look at, and I like when you pick a certain area, what do you, what do you want done with this area? Then we can listen to people, and again, trying to give them the same information we have, that we know the Flyway's coming maybe, or we have an issue with getting water under 680, or whatever it is, if we all work off the same set of plans, and then we can go, I think, quicker, and pretty soon, it'll be like a domino. If, if this is going here, and this is going here, then it makes perfect sense for this to go here. And we can incorporate housing, and like I said, some people won't like it, I am not apologizing for housing, we need more housing, and we'll put it wherever we can put it, but wherever it fits, and it's smart, right? And the closer you get to the freeways and transportation centers, the higher up and the more, more dense it just has to be. And that's my humble opinion, but, so, David, you, you agree, and our consultants agree, I don't know how we would do this yet, but we, we pick a spot, figure out, this is the best use right now, and then go... And then go just a domino down, because we've got most of this lect already, I think. But we run into a couple of big roadblocks out here, so.
I think Reggie.
Councilwoman Tim, this is, this is, I hear you totally. If the city needs to go out and acquire any parkland, then we would do that. But I think we also want to leverage other tools we have. We had a discussion that's in here at the last meeting. For example, if some housing is allowed at lower elevations out there, can we require them in return to be preserving other portions of it for publicly accessible open space, for example? The city does collect park impact fee currently. If you want to leverage that as new housing is built, we want to require them to be building some parkland to go along with the housing and some other parkland elsewhere that we would collect the monies for and would be larger in size and nature. And yes, in some instances, the city would go out and acquire, you know, land. We want to leverage everything we possibly can. And I think we can do it based on the discussion and the direction you gave us here today.
Good, I'm glad. I'm glad you agree. I'm glad you popped up. Because this is, like I said, this is what facilitates us actually moving forward instead of just talking about it, but with concrete results. And you get everybody in the room. You're all not going to agree, I can tell you that, but that's okay. Because if, if I disagree and you disagree, but we got a deal, man, that's what you call the art of the deal, so we get it done. All right, thank you very much.
Yep. So we've talked, sorry, we've talked a little bit about blocks and specific areas that you'd like us to focus on. Does, does council have any recommendations for what specific areas you would like us to focus on?
Well, tonight, we're talking about Cordelia, so.
But even within Cordelia?
Well.
I think, I think we've got good direction, yeah.
And I was going to say, if, and if need be, if need be, you saw what Joe, Joseph wrote us. They talk about a park and, and you might have been very specific in an area where, and it's something we can look at and say, like, hey, that's a good idea. This is what it's going to cost, or this is what we think it's going to cost. How do we pay for it? Right? And not now, not now, but just your wheels are turning. Or somebody wants retail. You got to tell me what kind of retail. You just can't tell me retail. And it can't be pie in the sky when you get a burger and an ice cream, because understanding the cost of land and buildings and stuff like that. You go rent it and you pay six, seven, eight thousand bucks a month. So, so you have to have the honest conversations, but with the information, I think they can, we'll get there, so. Does, does that kind of answer your question, maybe?
Yes, thank you.
Good night, Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
You know, we have a good staff. I would say, you know, Chuck, as far as, you know, where do we start? I think staff should bring us back, you know, some areas, because obviously there are a few areas out there that need, need the help, so. Do you agree, David?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. City Manager, sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm hearing you. So what we can do is we, we can break this down to the, you know, basically the remaining opportunity sites. We'll look at the, you know, compare the alternatives, engage with residents a little bit more here. I mean, I think we've heard loud and clear the types of things that they're interested in out in this area. And then we can work, work with our consultants to, you know, formulate what that conversation looks like and come back. And, and as I'm hearing, you know, almost like a parcel-by-parcel, area-by-area conversation, and we can, we can do that.
And some conversation with the college, too?
Yes, yep.
I just want to, if I could, Mr. Mayor, real quickly, I, I don't want my colleagues to feel like, I mean, we all know that we've, we've done a lot over the years, but I want to bring up something that if we were around and we were making the calls when Cordelia Villages was first thought about, it would have a lot in there. How can I say that? Oh, come on, Kat. Well, because in our development that's going out in the specific plan around the train station and so on, we have all kinds of stuff out there that if you've been out there, there's all, one of the first things that went up was a big coffee shop. And there's a lake out there and people row out there. Those were things that we did. And so you want to know what we did for the city? A lot. I can sit and I, you know, I'm not going to, I'm going to defend my colleagues and the mayor who's been planning for a long, long time in this city. And I just want to say, we hear you. We're doing all we can to get done what you all want. Because we're your neighbors. That's what we want, too. Don't think we like getting our butts chewed, just like you don't. But we do like the feedback and I'm proud of what this council's done, including tonight and what's going to change out in Cordelia. So there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, David Feinstein, any concluding comments from your department, please?
Yeah, just with concluding comments, I think we've gotten very clear direction about what our next steps are for the, for the Cordelia planning process. And we hear you, we hear the residents, and we'll, we'll take that. And when we come back, we'll be, we'll be ready to address these issues.
There is no other business before this body. We are adjourned. Thank you. Good night.